Good evening, it's now 6:00 PM. This is November 26th and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Garland Independent School District Board of Trustees. A quorum is present and notice of this meeting was posted as required by law. Will Durant and his wife Ariel wrote the seminal work of history in the United States called "The Story of Civilization," an 11-volume series which won the Pulitzer Prize and he and his wife received the Presidential Medal of Honor. A quote from Will Durant, "Education is a progressive discovery of our own ignorance." Did you know, two weeks ago, I got flipped at Jackson Technology Middle School and I was not doing gymnastics? There is a new trend in this country and it's called the flipped classroom. I was invited by Principal David Dunphy and 8th grade science teacher extraordinaire Janet Jones to participate in a flipped classroom. Flipped classroom makes so much sense, you wonder why is it just happening? Normally, when we've attended school, we have a lesson in the day and we have our homework at night. If however, we have problems with our homework, there's nobody to help us. The new way of education that's coming very quickly throughout the United States, you have the lesson at night and do the homework the next day in class with the teacher present. And so, I got the science lesson sent to me at home. I did it. There was a little quiz, I'm glad to say I did very well, I was a little worried competing with 8th graders. And the next day, at Jackson, I participated in homework and the science lab. And I will promise you, every one of those students was totally engaged for the full period. A great learning experience and the trend in education in this country. Thank you for Principal Dunphy and teacher extraordinaire Ms. Jones. Please join me for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We'll go to item 3, information items, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. Our first Evidence of Excellence Award tonight is a true reflection of humanity and heroism and it was prompted, brought to our attention by the Garland Fire Department, specifically Station 1. So I would like to call Merrill Balencier, the Public Information Officer of Garland Fire Department, and Sam Mutrix of Station 1 to go forward with their presentation.
Would like to call up Lakisha Callpepper.
This is a Community Action Award Certificate. The Garland Fire Department presents Community Action Award Certificate to Lakisha Callpepper in appreciation for your proactive and professional service. Your efforts to initiate CPR and utilize an AED ultimately saved the patient's life. Golden Meadows Elementary School, August 9th, 2012. What this is, the AEDs that are in all the schools now and then throughout the city, someone notified her and may let her tell the story, but notified her that there was a employee down. She immediately took action, applied the AED, which helps us before we arrive, get the patient's heart going back to get him to the hospital to perform the rest of the life-saving procedures. Anything you'd like to add additionally?
Just to say very quickly that Mr. Ford, who is the gentleman that I had the responsibility to perform CPR and use the AED machine on that day, was the custodian at Golden Meadows Elementary for 22 years. An outstanding person and a good friend. And I regret only today that I wasn't able to save him. But I appreciate all that our district did to make me ready for that day. And I appreciate the firefighters who do this every day. So, so I accept this word gladly, but it's really about you guys and I can't imagine having to do that again. So, thank you.
All right. Just turn around.
I'd like to call up Mr. George Jones.
Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, members of the board. The women that you see in front of you are representatives of the Garland High School Acapella Women's Choir. Their director is Cheryl Wilson. And the Garland High Acapella Women's Choir has been invited in February to perform at the Texas Music Educators Association Conference in San Antonio in February. This will be the fourth time that a Garland High Choir has been invited to perform at TMEA. And while they certainly are deserving of an Evidence of Excellence Award, I'll quote another famous George, "I cannot tell a lie, that's not why they're here tonight." I'll yield the rest of my time to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison. Once again, numbers can be used for several things. They can be used to work for you or against you. They can be used to commemorate, to celebrate and commiserate. However, tonight's numbers will be used in a positive manner, not a pessimistic way. And the number that will bear the brunt of our focus is the number 50. Throughout time, 50 has been used in a manifold of analogies. It is said that 50 symbolizes the total man. 50 is the number of spiritual ascension to intuition and the number of illumination. 50 is considered by many as the holiest and most natural of numbers. This is because 50 equals the sum of the square numbers 9 plus 16 plus 25 constructed on the sacred triangle of Pythagoras. And if you want a journalism major to explain all of that to you, I'm sorry, you're all out of luck. 50 is the traditional number of years in a jubilee period. There are 50 states in the U.S. Television series Hawaii 5-0 was, name was construed from the fact that it was the 50th state to join America. 5-0 is slang for police officers, that the popo's coming to get you, and 50 is the speed limit in unposted areas of the Australian continent. And 50 for tonight's purpose is the soon-to-be age of our superintendent. Of course, lots of folks were born in 1963, so that in and of itself is not necessarily a large accomplishment, so I searched high and low for some of Dr. Bob's birth year brethren who have something in common with the man who leads G-I-S-D. First off, Brad Pitt, born in 1963 in Shawnee, Oklahoma. He grew up amongst Choctaw, the Cherokees, and of course Sasquatch.
I'd like to stop you right there. We have, we have a lot in common.
No doubt, no doubt.
Brad Pitt.
Quentin Tarantino, born in 1963, a director, obviously, much like the director of our school district, but pause for a moment if you would and think back to the Convocation, the Godfather skit. And look at, everybody, look at, look at the man right there, Dr. Morrison, and tell me that you could envision him as a themed character in Pulp Fiction. Two mob hitmen, a boxer, gangster's wife, and two diner bandits. I can, I can see you playing that role. Michael Jordan and Charles Barkley, both turned 50 this year. And there is a picture of your superintendent with an Afro dunking a basketball. So the commonalities need not be explained. The part we didn't mention was the trampoline at the bottom of the photo.
Yeah. I just want you to notice how much hair I had back then.
And the Sooner Jersey, of course.
Of course.
Seal Coolio, James Hetfield, both are singers and our superintendent is a self-professed choir member in high school. We have no audio proof of this, but, good thing, bad thing? Okay. And last but not least, since he is a man who likes to work, is a man who does not let grass grow under his feet, he's a man who gets things done. Getter done himself, Larry the Cable Guy turned 50 this year. That said, there's nothing 50/50 about this superintendent and we do wish you a happy 50th on December 1st, if you would.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Morrison. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. What's the date that they're performing in San Antonio?
Valentine's Day, Friday the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be back with the real Evidence of Excellence.
You did a great job.
Very good.
Now, now, Dr. Morrison, we do have an Evidence of Excellence Award for you, for your golden year. Appreciate it. And we know how much you love cupcakes and those especially from Brendel's Bakery in Rowlett, so.
Happy birthday to you. We made sure we had snickerdoodle today because I know that's your favorite. And, you know, we support everything to do with G-I-S-D. I've said it many times, I'm a product of G-I-S-D, so happy birthday to you on behalf of Brendel's Bakery.
Thank you very much.
And I would have lit the candles, but the fireman would not allow me to do that when I was walking in, so, anyway. I hope y'all enjoy. And there's more cupcakes for the crowd later, after the whatever.
Do we, do we have to give them to them?
No, you don't have to. You can have them all.
No, I'm just teasing. That'd be great. Thank you very much. We, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure are these cupcakes being right here is the best of ideas for either you or me, but we will continue. Item 3A, 3B, here, update on the strategic plan, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. Last month, the district launched its strategic plan. Of course, you all were heavily involved in the preemptive planning stages. Of course, the strategic plan is to help outline the long-term goals and the means to which we can achieve them as a school district. This is essentially an overview of what has occurred and more specifically, what is in line in the next couple of phases. Again, outline long-term plans, partnering with student, staff, community members. Public participation has been gained thus far through the community forums, which have been well-attended. I believe between 250, 300 people have attended the two meetings at the Curtis Colwell Center and at Lakeview Centennial High School. Discussion topics have included everything listed there, curriculum, technology, college career, planning. A lot of positive feedback from students, specifically at the Lakeview Centennial Forum. They were engaged and involved there. The next phases of this, essentially to this point, we have managed the communication phases. Phase 1, the publicity, the promotion. Phase 2 begins our focus groups. There are the details of the focus groups. They're scheduled January 15th through 16th. They're all day. The purpose is to gather targeted feedback and it will be comprised of district and community members listed in those groups. Business community, campus administration, central office, elementary, high school teachers as well, including middle school students, parents, secondary teachers. And then the ninth group will be anyone within the community and parents who were unable to make the focus groups during the course of the day. Focus groups will lead to the design team. The first meeting of the design team is January 29th through 30th, again, an all-day meeting. They will lay the foundation, belief statements, goals, call to action, and begin with the next phases within the implementation. That will be comprised of 30 to 40 stakeholders, district-designated. A lot of these stakeholders will be gathered from involvement in the focus groups. There's also a survey online currently on the homepage of the website that's been up and runs through December 13th. And it is asking for potential members and folks who are interested in participating within the focus groups. That will also comprise part of this design team. There's your breakdown of design team members, auxiliary staff, board, campus administration. The numbers beside those labels designate the members that we anticipate having part of the 30 to 40 overall. Central office staff, a lot of your civic groups, parents, students and teachers again. A well-rounded gathering of folks. Action team training, this is the group that will help implement the design team. The first action team training is for district facilitators. Those are the folks who are going to carry through with the action team. That training will be February 9th from noon to 5:00. And again, is to help the folks that are going to be directing this to learn their, their goals and objectives and engage that actual action team. The first action team training takes place later that evening, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, where that group, the facilitators, will take what they've gathered in the afternoon session and apply that to begin analyzing the goals and gather the, the research. There will be additional action team meetings. The district facilitators responsible for this will determine the number. They will continue with research and development of the design team goals. And again, that will be comprised of the same district-identified participants. The second meeting of the design team will be March 5th. They're going to go ahead and approve the action plans, get them into place, and roll the, the plan out. And again, those are the 30 to 40 stakeholders. Some of the things that we have utilized thus far to gain promotion and involvement, you see the flyers on the left portion of your screen. Those were distributed throughout the city. They were also sent home a couple of times to, in elementary take-home folders. We have littered the city with well over 100,000 pieces of literature. Those "Your Opinion Matters" cards have been passed out regularly at, at city events, civic events, chamber events to promote and explain what exactly we are seeking with the dates of the meetings posted on them. Two of the three again have occurred. The next one is scheduled after we return from winter break. Snapshot of the website on the bottom left along with a couple of videos that have been used to promote. Again, the survey is available on the homepage as well as the link to the actual Tradition Rich Future Ready page. And there's another video there to the right that's been incorporated into the planning meetings and of course, the logo at the bottom of the page. One thing that, that I've used to summarize the strategic plan, because some folks will say, what exactly is a strategic plan? Something that I've been able to, to relate to folks, kind of that aha moment, is Dr. Morrison has told people, one of the things that came with him that was a, a big draw for you guys, I'm certain, was the one-to-one iPad initiative in Mansfield. And he has readily admitted that that is not something that he came up with. That was a result that stemmed from these focus groups. The community wanted one-to-one, the community supported one-to-one. And because they got that feedback, they were able to go forth and, and put that into place as part of what they gathered in their strategic plan. But that is essentially the strategic plan in a nutshell, kind of what we have done to this point, and the future dates and the information that will be shared and gathered there. So, if you guys have any questions, I would be happy to entertain them.
That's great.
Will all of these dates be placed on our board calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just let me add a couple of things. One, the next date will be Tuesday, December 3rd, at Rowlett High School, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We've, as Mr. Moore indicated, we've had tremendous, tremendous attendance at the first two sessions. We would expect the third to be equally well-attended. The questions we're getting are very probing as to where that we're going to go for the future. And that's the most important thing. What does the community expect from this district? What do the students expect? What are the outcomes we have to plan for? On January 15th and 16th with the focus groups, those will each be 90 minutes long. So, if you have any interest in either participating in a focus group or in our design team, please fill out the survey. There's a place to volunteer on that. If you've already filled it out and say, "I never indicated I wanted to volunteer," please contact either the superintendent, any of the trustees. Let us know. We're looking for people who have a vital interest in the direction of this district. We need people who can spend some time with us, whether it's the 90 minutes in a focus group or have a couple of days to actually spend moving the plan from the first stages, which have been at the Colwell Center, Lakeview High School, upcoming Rowlett, from the focus groups, and then getting ready for an actual document. And that, that document will drive this district, not only at the board level, but it'll be incorporated into each of the campus improvement plans and the district improvement plan with checkmarks. Have we followed our strategic plan? Are we following it? And it's a flexible document to match what the legislature does, because we never know what's going to happen with the legislature. We saw in House Bill 5, dramatic, dramatic changes. We know that our strategic plan will match that. What is the vision we have for the future of this district? And that's what we need your help for. So please, volunteer and let us know your interest as we go forward. Any other questions? Mr. Moore, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to item 3C, review research and information related to changing start time for high schools. Dr. Morrison.
Board members, you have before you just some information that we have gathered. And Dr. Davis is going to be here along with Brian Abbott to do a presentation and then after that, we'll have plenty of time for questions.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, members of the board, Dr. Morrison. Happy early birthday to you. I'm glad to hear that the, some of the parts of the Pythagorean theorem equal 50 and that was a, that was a new knowledge for me tonight, so. I've been asked to provide with you a review of the published research regarding secondary school start times. The information being presented is based solely on research that's been gathered from across our nation and does not contain any opinions or input from G-I-S-D. The research-reported adolescent sleep requirements first is good to see that the consensus is somewhere between eight and a half to nine and a quarter hours of sleep each night for teenagers. And then there are a lot of articles out there, as you have received in your board packet. I know that there was a, a great deal of information in there. So the summation of that are some of the things here, that it increases the quantity of sleep, it improves attendance, improves rate of continuous enrollment, decreases tardiness, improves behavior, improves school morale, better grades, lower traffic accident rate among school-aged drivers. There was one indication from a Wake County, North Carolina study that said that the start of middle school at 8:30 increased their math and reading scores by two to three percentile points. Note that the other things on this page are reported, not statistically significant data research, but these are the things that were reported by the people who were part of the research studies. The research concerns regarding later school start times include that the research doesn't conclusively demonstrate that later high school start times produce academic gains. Traffic volume increases after 8:00 AM, which warrants some fears for high school students who are drivers and get on the road after that time, because that is more into the rush hour time. And the research designs need to go beyond the subjective feelings of sleepiness to measure academic performance. The effects of sleep deprivation are that it negatively affects the capacities and skills necessary to perform well. There's an increased risk of depression, falling asleep, car crashes, risk of obesity, and some student reported low self-esteem. The logistical issues, and, and you can see at the top, this is from a parent's survey results, I'm sorry, regarding later secondary school start times. Logistical issues such as busing, athletics and childcare for younger students were a concern to parents in some cases. In a study outside of the Minneapolis area, after a year of later school start times, there was a 92% positive indication that the parents preferred the later start times. Administrative challenges, you would think that there would be quite a few, but for just specifically the administrative, the main report that came out was regarding transportation schedules and figuring out how to handle that. We're going to talk about that in a few minutes. Mr. Abbott's going to present that information to you. Extracurricular and after-school activity challenges for later start times were of course, scheduling practices. Short time for after-school activities as darkness, of course, is a, a problem in some of these areas, if it, if it's outside, of course. It causes students to get home later in the day and the impact that the hours available for after-school jobs. Parent challenges, the parent-reported challenges with later secondary start times is the childcare for younger siblings. Parents have an expectation that their older child can help take care of the younger child after school. Car pools and that it was disruptive to the parent's work schedule. There are also some suggestions that came out of the research regarding other ways to combat the fact that our teenagers aren't getting enough sleep. And I thought that that was important for us to bring out in this presentation as well. And that is that our parents should enforce a bedtime schedule. They should enforce a weekend schedule that does not allow students to sleep long hours on weekends. Prioritize extracurricular activities and curb late-night social time as needed. Limit teen work hours to 16 to 20 hours per week. Try to curb caffeine. I skipped long naps, curb long naps. Too much caffeine, of course, can interfere with a good night's sleep. And encourage your teen to wind down at night. Discouraging loud music is one of the things that was encouraged for parents to do. There was a three-year study that occurred in both an urban and suburban district, district outside of Minneapolis. And so the University of Minnesota is responsible for conducting this, this research and it took place over a three-year period and safe, and looked at academic performance, behavior and safety in urban and suburban schools. Here are the reports from that study. Data from both schools indicated that there was improved attendance, an increase in continuous enrollment, less tardiness, and students made fewer trips to the school nurse. Suburban students reported that they gained an average of about one hour of sleep per night, they ate breakfast more frequently, and they were able to complete more of their homework during school hours. The research indications on grades that was that grades did show a slight improvement, although the change was not statistically significant. Researchers did want to make note that it was difficult to assess whether or not the changes in grades were really due to the later start time because of the differences in school schedules, course names, grading policies, student transience, and the subjective nature of grading by teachers. Suburban teachers and principals reported that students seemed more alert in class, student behavior improved, there were shorter athletic and other activity practices and rehearsals with students arriving home later, and that actual participation in extracurricular activities and after-school jobs remained the same. Again, this is for the suburban students. The suburban counselors reported that fewer students were seeking help for stress relief, fewer students were coming to the counselors with peer relationship problems and difficulties with parents. Urban teachers, on the other hand, reported no general improvement in student behavior. They also reported that it decreased the number of students involved in extracurricular activities, that it increased conflicts with after-school jobs and compromised those students and, resultingly, the family's earnings. students and, resultingly, the family's earnings. The coaches of urban students were split. They opposed it because of practice time and travel time, and they were proponents of it because students were less tired and more mentally alert. Both suburban and urban parents reported accordingly. Suburban parents supported the change. Urban parents, on the other hand, had mixed reactions. Their main sources of contention, again, were work schedules, transportation limitations. Both sets of parents did report more connection time in the mornings with their students. We also looked at some area district start times as to what's going on. We picked, actually, Mr. Abbott did the research on these start times, and these are the reports. Then I had some staff in my department call each of the school districts to check as far as magnet programs were concerned, because that's one of our big parts of our transportation system. And so you can see, and these are just listed alphabetically, there's, there's no certain order. So the, they are listed from earliest start time to latest start time for each of the schools. The next three. Note with the asterisk, Plano ISD is a, is an ISD that has magnet programs, and it is important to note that their transportation is provided from designated stops to and from three academies. They do not go door-to-door to pick up for magnet students. Also, Richardson ISD has magnet schools. They also do the same as Plano. Their transportation is provided from designated pickup and drop-off points. And then you can see the others. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Abbott to present on the transportation information regarding school start times.
Anybody have any questions at this point?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. Ex.
I had a call from a parent who's also an educator, secondary educator, and I was wondering if we either have done or have the capacity of doing any kind of study to determine, not necessarily the after-school jobs that students have to get extra spending money, but those students that are actually contributing to their family's income and significantly, whether, whether our, we would be harming that ability of our students. Do we have any way of gathering that kind of information?
I, I do not know of a way to gather that information. I certainly understand what you're saying, but I do not know that we track that in any way.
Thank you.
Mr. Ex, I think that three-year study kind of answered that question, and I think what we have to do is determine whether we see Garland as a suburban district or in more in the suburban slash urban district. Because in the urban district, it did show that it hurt the students when it came to jobs. In the suburban district, it did not. And so we would probably have to do an internal reflection as where we see ourselves and let that study probably speak for what is more accurate.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Abbott.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, trustees, Dr. Morrison. Just a little bit of historical information about how the triple-staggered schedule was adopted. In nineteen eighty-seven, when the Kimberlin, Hillside, and Austin academies were formed, a triple-staggered was adopted simply because of the time and distance that's required to transport students from all, from any point in the district to these campuses. At that time, our high schools were selected to start at seven-thirty. Originally, our elementaries were to start at eight-ten, and our middle schools at eight-fifty. Well, we've maintained that schedule since eighty-seven. Since then, as we've formed new, new magnets. In ninety-eight, we put Jackson Middle School on the same schedule with North Garland High School. So since those were both MST magnets, we could do so without any additional cost because we had the open timeframe at the high school level. We could pick up the high school, the North Garland MST kids with the Jackson MST kids with no additional cost. The same thing occurred in two thousand and one, when we went with the classical centers at Brandenburg and Vile. The Vile Elementary is the only one that's going at the middle school timeframe. In any triple-stagger schedule, from a transportation standpoint, it's really, it makes, from our standpoint, little difference or no difference in what order we transport kids. With the schedule that we've got with a seven-thirty start with our first school, our first student is going to be picked up as early as six o'clock. With any schedule that we've got, regardless of who the first campus is, if we maintain a seven-thirty start, the first student will be picked up at six o'clock, simply because of, like I say, we're covering the entire district on our magnet programs. The, currently, we're running a hundred and seventy-six regular education route and sixty special education routes, and all of these buses serve more than one school level. Most of our, at all of our elementary levels, all of those serve two campuses within the same school level. We've got our Walnut Glen Beaver kids riding together. We've got our Kimberlin Watson kids riding together, our Hillside Watsons, so we're doubling up wherever possible. One scenario here that we had mentioned was if we changed the order of our school times. One thing that, like I said, as an example, if the elementary were to go first, one recommendation that we would have is that we push back the start times to possibly, and like I say, this is just an example where our elementary would be at seven-forty-five. The elementary principals request that we have these children at school up to thirty minutes prior to the start. Our thinking was, if we're going to try to aim to have students dropped off as early as seven-fifteen, the first pickup then would still be for an elementary child, could be as early as six-fifteen in the morning. But again, whatever the, the board's direction is as far as the sequence, those times could be staggered or altered as needed. The one option other than going to a triple-staggered schedule is some of the examples we looked at would be going to a double-tiered schedule, where you have your elementary at one start time, and then your secondary at a later start time. Again, those were just examples of times, obviously, upon board direction or principal input, those could be altered. But what the, the gist of that would be is any of our transportation areas that overlap, Coyle with Rylett, Hudson and Saxi, Lyles and Lakeview, Webb and Napier, anywhere where we could double students from the same area going to the, two secondary schools that are in close proximity another, to one another, that's what we would do. The one thing that where it represents the biggest challenge on that is under a triple-staggered schedule, a lot of our high school routes are at capacity, and a lot of our middle school routes are at capacity. If you go to a double-staggered schedule and you try to combine those areas into the same schedule, then obviously the number of buses would not, would be insufficient with what we've got now. One quick study that we did is we, sharing routes could result in an estimated eighty additional buses. The next slide represents if we ought to consider a double-staggered schedule. With the eighty additional regular ed buses, we took, like I say, a rough look at the number of special ed buses. As you can see, just strictly a one-time startup cost. Our current facility does not have the amount of park space to accommodate that number of additional buses. If you're going to fuel just under a hundred new buses, we'd need additional fueling stations. Just an initial startup on anything other than a triple-staggered schedule, we're looking at roughly over ten and a half million startup cost. An ongoing cost, if we were to try to maintain, let's say, a double-staggered schedule, we would request, like I say, additional staff, like I said, whether it's route supervision, mechanics, obviously, we'd need additional drivers and aides. The amount of additional fuel consumption per bus, that's in excess of another, you know, over three and a half million. All these are just rough estimates, and these, these would be, like I say, reviewed should the, the district decide to pursue a double-staggered schedule. We're looking at roughly, if you take those, over fourteen million dollars if we were to transform to a two-tiered start time. Anybody have any questions over the transportation?
Any questions at this point? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just let me make a couple of comments. I'm the one who asked this to be on the agenda. I've talked about this now for several years. The trend in the United States is in one direction, and that direction is for high schools to have later start times. The last time I brought this issue up, I was asked to provide articles, and in your, you got emails from Ms. Minx that had twelve different articles, including from the National Sleep Foundation, Psychology Today, the Hanover Research Council, the Mayo Clinic, and the Congressional Record, all indicating the trend that I've been talking about. The latest is Carrollton Farmers Branch, which in two thousand and eleven switched their start times. You had some information in your packets about Carrollton Farmers Branch. I had a chance, two weeks ago, to talk to Mr. James Goode, who several of you know, who's the board president at Carrollton Farmers Branch, and Ms. Georgianne Warnock, who's the associate superintendent there. When this change took place, she was the principal at RL Turner, one of the Carrollton Farmer Branch high schools. Their reports, two years after this, are all very positive. They thought there would be more problems with parents. There were almost none. Their results seem to indicate everything positive, all the things that we've seen in this presentation this evening, in terms of less sleep deprivation, less absenteeism. All those points are coming to fruition, as they expected, and now in practice. So it's something that we need to think about. More recently, I gave you an article that had appeared in the Dallas Morning News from our own coach, Jeff Jordan. You may remember, you got this article that I sent you. That's the latest trend. Even at, in athletics, the coaches are realizing, as he says, "For W's, catch some Z's." That was the, and he's quoted as saying, "The more sleep the athletes get, the more alert they are, the less accidents happen, and the better results." So kind of interesting, the whole trend in this country is understanding that the most important thing, and I think that's why I bring this up, what we do here has to be for the kids. And every study says that high school kids, and I have, I wrote down the word here, continuous state of jet lag. Think about that if you've flown a plane. That's one of the things that's going on with kids. Internal biological clocks. All these terms from Psychology Today, circadian rhythms, sleep disorders, all saying that our kids, once they pass puberty, are going to bed later and having to wake up earlier. It's something to think about. It's not, it's not an action item. We'll talk about it. We have some ideas on costs, and you might want to check with some of your colleagues as to what they're finding out. But again, the trend in the United States is for high schools to start later. Any other comments? We'll go to item three D, receive update on global business Mandarin Chinese program.
All right, good evening, Mr. Glick. Good evening, Mr. Glick, trustees, Dr. Morrison. I'm here to bring you a brief update on the global business Mandarin Chinese leadership Just before we get started, and some of the information that was sent to you in your Friday packet has been updated. And so as we go through the three items, they have been slightly revised since you received your information on Friday. We're going to look at the secondary timeline, staffing needs, and a proposed budget, and next steps. So looking at our secondary implementation timeline, September, October, November, our committee has been planning, and so most of the action steps that are stated there in November have been in preparation and in planning. So creating program letters, pulling ITBS, explore data so that we can identify students that meet the program eligibility criteria, and pre-planning, parent meetings, so setting potential dates and times, and presentation. Our principals and a few committee members have gone to visit some other high schools, I believe in Houston, and we've made a determination as to what new CTE courses require board approval. So moving on into December, we're looking to seek board approval on the program, program names, new courses, and post the first two positions that we would need to hire, which is our global business, and it's a teacher position, but it's an advisor or program coordinator, as well as our Mandarin Chinese language specialist. Send out invitation letters to our parent information meetings and send special programs and CTE to a PBL conference so that they can start to plan the capstone piece. January would be hiring those two positions, carrying on with the recruitment piece, the student application piece, meeting with the communications department to develop a logo, a marketing plan, conduct parent meetings. And then the rest of the spring will be used to coordinate and administer, coordinate with the administrators, who will be building the master schedules at each of the campuses to ensure that we're maximizing the programs there, post an interview, the Mandarin Chinese and global business teacher positions, and align and develop any other curriculum and program planning. Looking at our secondary staffing needs, in order to start this for next year, we would need a Mandarin Chinese teacher and a global business teacher. These two teachers would be split between the middle school and the high school, and we have revised the last column to show the mid-range as far as teacher experience rather than the starting, and that's what you originally received. The Mandarin Chinese language support specialist, this position would be responsible for curriculum development and content. And then our global business teacher slash advisor. And this, you'll see in the presentation, sometimes we consider these people magnet coordinators at the campus, but it's not really truly a coordinator position. Right now, we have an IB coordinator, an MST coordinator, a college and career magnet coordinator, and so this would be an advisor-type of position that's campus-based that would help coordinate all of the magnet implementation, recruitment, et cetera. One thing to note is that these would not be additional new created positions. We would look at repurposing any vacancies through attrition to fund or to support these Looking at our secondary proposed budget, this is inclusive of identified professional development, textbooks, software that we would need to start the program at both the middle school and the high school. What you received on Friday had an estimated transportation cost. Since then, we have met, and Since then, we have met, and it looks as though if we can combine the South Garland, I'm sorry, the North Garland and the Garland High School magnet transportation routes, it would free up one of the routes that then we could implement to the new magnet program at Naaman without having to add to the general fund. So next steps, coming back to all of you next month for board approval of the program, name, courses, post positions, and we would start out with the first two, the coordinator position and the language specialist. Proceed with our secondary timeline, and then reconvene our committee to continue planning and researching our elementary program. Any questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Axe?
This is very well worked out, thank you. Wanted to ask a couple of things. On the two positions, obviously, the Mandarin Chinese language support specialist will have to be certified in Mandarin Chinese. What kind of certification beyond that are you going to ask for that person, if any? And also, the coordinator, will there be an additional requirement for administrative or supervisory certificate for that person? And on the business coordinator, is there currently a global business certification offered in Texas, or is that something we'll have to use just a regular business teacher for?
Well, for the first one, for our language specialists, they would need to be certified in Mandarin Chinese, and we certainly need the language expertise, someone who is fluent in the language, and we don't have that expertise currently within our district. The program coordinator, we would need to look at how we currently have that posted at the other campuses. It's, to my understanding, it's a teaching position, so certified teacher. What the content area is, I'm not 100% sure on that, but we can follow back up with you on that. And as far as the global business, that is just a business certification.
Thank you.
Dr. Castaneda?
Hello, Dr. Williams, nice to see you again. Are you thinking for the language position for Mandarin, that would it be preferable to have someone who could offer dual-credit instruction at the upper levels, once the program develops enough years of language sequence for that to be possible?
That would certainly be a bonus, but that's also part of the articulation that we will be working with our community colleges, as well as our colleges and universities in the area, to try to offer, if that's not something that we can do internally, that either our campus, that we can bring someone in from one of the colleges or universities, or kids can take it online through one of the campuses. It certainly would be a benefit if we have that expertise in-house.
And for the students that are this year at Austin Academy taking the Mandarin? So there may be some students, by the time they get to high school, who will have three years already.
Right.
Well, for the, for the students that may be coming in with one year, starting next fall, or with two years, starting this fall subsequent to that, where, will we have a full complement of offerings for that, for those, for those students?
Yes, and actually, when we've put it down on paper, students that start in middle school, when they get into their junior and senior year, those would be the two years that they could take dual-credit Chinese at that point.
Okay.
Or take it at the college level. I mean, because the AP, they would be eligible to take AP or Chinese for their sophomore, junior year, and then dual-credit their subsequent year.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes, thank you for the timeline and the updates. On your timeline, all of these points in terms of getting it approved as a new course offering, are all of these events taking the same, happening the same time with the normal flow of us approving and getting courses ready for the next year? Or are any of these timelines outside of our normal process when we're getting ready for the next school year?
That's a very good question. Usually, December is the month that we bring new courses to the board for approval. We may have to come twice, and being in that right now with HB5, they're still ironing out some of the changes. And so our timeline on when courses get approved, choice of subject, all of those things may have to be pushed back just because of the State Board of Education still not finalizing what those endorsements are going to be, what the course of studies are going to be, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I'm just, usually, we have one time and we're done.
Right.
And I just want to make sure that we, as a board, understand that we're not proving the next year's schedule with everything there, or we're doing it in pieces, or we're pulling this program out specifically, separately, and we'll be going with a different timeline altogether. And saying that, does that impact what's going on on these two proposed campuses? What is the preparation? Do we have space available? Do we have all of that worked out on these proposed campuses?
Yes, we do have the space available. We actually have, going back to what we would, we would bring to the table, the new courses would actually be courses that the students would take their junior and senior year. So technically, if we needed to push back the new courses so that they all came at the same time, we could technically do that, but we would certainly seek your approval for the program and the program name as soon as possible, so that then we can try to get, advertise, recruit students and parents, and try to get that in before choice of school time, and before choice of subject.
So we're going to try to have everything worked out before we go out to parents with choice, so that they aren't making choice twice?
Right.
That they're making their normal choice?
Right.
And then they're coming back to make a choice on this?
Yes.
On this new program?
Yes.
I think it's going to be very important of how we advertise and communicate that so that parents aren't confused, and we don't get bombarded with, "Well, I didn't know this was coming," and, you know, you know how all of that works.
And our principals and the campuses, they've had some pre-planning, and so as soon as we have official blessing, I think they'll be ready to go the very next day on what they need to get done, so that, because they will be working with a very short window and timeframe.
So the administrative teams on these two campuses are part of the advisory council or the implementation team that's overseeing this? So they're in the meetings of where the discussions are going on, not that they, discussions are going on, and then we're being given them what's going to happen? So they are there at the table to explain how this is going to be implemented?
Absolutely, they have been at the table. This is, they're, they've provided the input and direction, and they've gone out and researched, they've gone to visit schools. They're super excited and ready to go.
And I am assuming, Dr. Barojas, the funds are coming from?
Oh, I thought you.
No.
No, the.
Dr. Barojas.
Of course, it's going to be general fund.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question.
Dr. Castaneda?
Spurred by some of trustee Griffin's questions. So I was wondering a little bit more about the application timeline. Will this program have an application from the student side?
Mm-hmm.
Like the collegiate academy, like the program? Okay, because then it is a little bit behind the queue.
Right.
Because those applications were due earlier this month.
Right, this gives them an opportunity, if they've applied for another magnet program, they, they were, they're not notified, and I don't have the magnet application timeline in front of me, but we're going to push back, I think, one of the deadlines on when they have to notify the campuses, that yes, I accept my spot at Lakeview, or I accept my spot at North Garland. The bulk of the recruiting is going to take place at the very end of December to the month of January, so that we can try to catch up with that magnet timeline the best that we can. But really, the important thing is to try to have that in place before choice of school.
Okay. And then, related to that, it indicates here that part of the work that you have ongoing for this month is to pull data from, explore in ITBS for students that meet the eligibility criteria. What is your sense of how large the pool may be?
It's pretty large. I can't give you the numbers, but that's already been done, and between the other magnets, there's certainly a large pool. So I can bring.
If you can just have the superintendent forward that to us, just to get a sense of the numbers.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We thank you very much, great presentation. Okay, item three E, receive information regarding move to eight-period block schedule at Lakeview Centennial High School for the 2014-2015 school year. Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, members of the board, and Dr. Morrison. I believe you have in your agenda a two-page document that gives you a little bit of history about the ten-period AB block schedule at Lakeview Centennial High School. In the winter of 2010, actually, I guess, beginning of 2009, 2010, there was interest in going to a ten-period AB block schedule at Lakeview Centennial High School. And the reason for that was to provide students opportunities to have other learning opportunities, to provide more rigorous coursework for remediation, for additional skill attainment, involvement in extracurricular activities, allow students to accelerate learning for early graduation and college entrance, and so on. So there are a lot of benefits to the ten-period AB block schedule. But the problem with it was that, in the area of career and technical education, and that's why I'm here today, because it impacted us greater than anybody financially and instructionally, because the window of time for instruction did not meet the state requirements for attendance accounting and student attendance accounting handbook. The schedule on the ten-period AB block schedule was for classes to be 65 minutes every other day. That's an average of 32 and a half minutes per day. So that's a big change, and that's a lot less time than what's required by TEA. So, why a waiver? A waiver addressed the window of time in the student attendance accounting handbook that would allow us to teach and get credit and provide students credit for the amount of time that they spent in the classroom, and at the same time, would allow the district to generate the contact hours and the funding that it would always draw. So that waiver, number one, was approved for three years, for the school years 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, 2012, 2013. So that waiver expired last year. And part of the waiver was that in March of 2012, I'm sorry, 2012, there had to be an outside evaluation done of the status of what was happening with the ten-period AB block schedule at Lakeview. So an outside evaluator was hired to come in and evaluate student achievement and the progress that we were making with the ten-period AB block schedule. And that, that report yielded very positive results, as a matter of fact, there were really no negative results reported in the report. Unfortunately, we never heard from the agency regarding what their feelings or their thoughts were about that report. So when the waiver expired in 2013, then we submitted another waiver in, I believe it was May, you approved it April 23, 2013, we submitted it in May, and it was approved. We requested it for three years, but it was approved for one year only. And you may say, well, why would they not grant us approval for a waiver for another three years? Dr. Williams mentioned House Bill 5, and that was one of the reasons. I'll read just a little bit of the excerpt from the reason why we did not get that approved. Says, "In anticipation of House Bill 5 becoming law, the agency expects to transition from the current graduation requirements to new requirements in the 2013-14 school year. Consequently, Garland ISD has approved for a waiver of the student attendance accounting handbook, requirements regarding CTE under the currently approved conditions for one additional school year, for Lakeview Centennial High School only. The district has cited the need for assessment remediation within the school day without diminishing available class periods necessary to meet the increased graduation requirements of the four before. House Bill 5 significantly decreases the number of end-of-course assessments and increases the flexibility in course scheduling for students. Consequently, the agency does not see a need for a waiver of the student attendance accounting handbook requirements regarding CTE beyond the 2013-2014 school year. Therefore, for the 2014-2015 school year, it's being recommended that we change to the eight-period AB block schedule, which is common at four other high schools, that being Garland High School, South Garland, North Garland, Naaman Forest." I would certainly try to address any questions or provide you additional information, if you have any.
Are there any questions? Just one, is there an appeal process?
I don't know that there's an appeal process. I suppose that we could possibly submit another waiver.
Yeah. Just wanted to be, be very clear with the board. We could ask for another one year. What we don't know is whether they will say yes, and we won't find out until after the students have been through enrollment, after the counselors have met with all the kids. And then, let's say we don't get it in May, because this one came out in May, I believe, is when, didn't that say it was May?
We submitted it, yes, sir.
In May.
It was approved in May.
Approved in May. So let's say they disallow it in May this year. Our concern is not, it's kind of 50/50. We could roll the dice, wait till May and see what happens, and then we'd have to ask the staff to come in the last month of school, meet with every kid, every student again, because, remember, with the 10 classes, that impacts the number of electives that you can take, and it changes everything if all of a sudden you go to eight classes on an AB block. And planning for graduation, planning for electives, students start doing that, and the quicker we start telling them that, they can make those adjustments, maybe even second semester this year to maybe take the, if they, if they were thinking about taking a certain semester elective next year, and they were just going to, you know, it allows for that time. And so the thought is, is we don't really want to roll the dice. We may get approved, but we may not.
What's the impact on the students as we make this change? Tell me how we would go the process for communicating with the students in preparation for, for next year. What would we do for the students?
There's usually a document that is designed for each school, based on the course offerings per, per school. So that document itself, the choice of subject, would have to be modified, and it's usually modified every year for that particular school. But that would depict all the courses that are available, and students would respectively choose the number of courses that they can choose for the eight-period AB block schedule.
In addition, what happens is, when the students turn in their enrollment, then the counselors are looking at that. So your counselors are doing a lot of that. I think, you know, a lot of people think when you say we have ten-period or five on A-day, five on B-day at Lakeview, it's not necessarily 10 different courses. Many of those courses are double-blocked. Your math, your science are double-blocked. So the students are getting math every day, science every day, if I'm correct. Is that science also?
Yes, and career technical.
Career, yeah, career technical. So there's a lot of double-blocking, and so that's why you'd want to tell the students as quick as possible, because, just because you think they have a ton of these elective openings to get the requirements for graduation, they've been planning one way, and now we may have to plan another way for them, which means we have online opportunities. Kids can take, students can take classes online, there's a lot of different ways to, to get credits made up. You can actually take PE online, so there's, you can take just about anything online.
And it was, in addition to that, it was mentioned that we could even offer some zero block, zero-hour classes in addition to the classes during the regular school day.
One last question. What staff was involved in bringing this to us, who all participated for this recommendation to come to us?
I'll answer that. Okay. The initial conversation took place between Dr. Williams and myself, and then she reached out to her staff. I visited with the high school. I visited with the high school principal. And then basically, like I said, there's nothing right now that dictates that we would definitely not get the waiver, that we also can't say without a shadow of a doubt that we will. And my recommendation is, is that we move forward, because I do not feel like it's appropriate to roll the dice because of the work that would be imposed upon all of the, all of the counselors and stuff if we don't get it. And by the words that Phil read there, there were quite a few words there that said, "House Bill five is changing everything," and we're still waiting for all of those House Bill five things. So we might know a little more if the state was a little bit more free with their House Bill five information, but they're dragging their feet, and so, but we're at a point where we can't drag our feet anymore. We have to prepare for enrollment.
I just wanted to make sure that all the entities that needed to be involved was, was at the table. And again, we're trying to get this done, so for course offerings for the next year. Thank you.
Any other questions? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go to item three F, receive information regarding the name of facilities. Dr. Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Glick. Mr. Glick, board members, Dr. Morrison, hope all of you and your families have a great Thanksgiving, by the way. You should have in your packet a list of 26 names that have been recommended, or, or, let me say bios instead of names, over some period of time. The problem is, is we don't have the actual dates that some of those were submitted. Linda Wolf, who is Dr. Williams and my secretary, took a cardboard box and went through it and redid all of those. So the information that you have has been typed. A lot of those were on one-page handwritten recommendations from people. So one of the things that I think also was in your packet was our board policy on those facilities, on, and the, what should be considered. We have to have one of the shortest board policies of any school district around on that. Since I, Dr. Morrison asked me to look into this, a lot of the districts have five- and six-page board policies where everything that is inspected, expected to be in that bio is spelled out, from the length of the time the person has served on the school district, and a lot of them to the length of the time the person has been retired or gone from the school district. So there's a lot more things we could put in board policy that would help you make those decisions. And all of you know, over the past, in the past, sometimes we had a facilities committee that looked at those recommendations and then made recommendations to the board. Sometimes we had community groups or families come here and make recommendations to the board as a whole. And so I think we would probably be doing ourselves a favor if we went back and had someone redo that board policy to more clearly spell out what the expectations are. There's, there are just so many things in there, and I've not been in, involved in this procedure in the past as much as Dr. Roden has, but both of us would be willing to help in any way we can in redoing these things. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
The reason we, we have this item before us is a few weeks ago, we had a presentation that citizens input from two different groups, and you have them indicated on our sheet from the Garcia family and the Valet family. One specifically looking to name the intake building, or, and that's been a request that's been made since I've been on this board. The other one was new to me. Since I've been on, this is my seventh year, we've named, I think, just one facility that would be changed to the Culwell Center that I'm aware of. So your suggestion is to look at CW Local?
Yes, sir.
And to do what with that?
To put in other things that y'all would want in there, or that you would expect the qualifications of a person that you would name a facility after. And also, most of the districts talk about naming the facility as a whole, not naming a hallway or a science wing or anything after individuals, only name that facility.
So what is the board's pleasure at this point? Any suggestions?
I think it would be good to review the policy. Of course, I'm looking over here at Ms. Griffin, and hate to say this, but my favorite story is when Homer Johnson, I guess this, number one, gives credence to this young man. You know what I'm about to tell you.
Yes, sir.
I know Linda does, too, that he was taking someone back from Homer Johnson Stadium, and they're talking in the backseat. Well, you know, Homer, that's the guy, he, you know, who is he? Well, he's a great guy, you know, but he's dead. So, you know, Homer tells that story really well.
Dr. Roden and I were, I think we remembered at least seven exceptions that the boards have made to those, to that provision there.
Mr. Axe.
As the proud owner of a silly name, a silly-sounding name, I think that something should be included to look at the, the possibilities of what the students will do with the name once the, the name is placed on the building. Mesquite seems to have a really good record with that. Maybe we should look at their policy.
They, I've looked at Daris Charles and Richardson and Spring Branch, and all three of them have excellent policies, so.
Then can you bring us back some suggestions?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure of this time to do it. We only really have one regular meeting on December 10th. Seventeenth was, is already full. So could we ask you to bring it back for our first meeting in January?
Absolutely.
Would that be good? Is that okay with everybody on the board? Good. Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mink, anything on public forum?
No.
Okay, we'll go to item five, discussion items, trustees, exchange of information. Mr. Axe, can I start with you again? I was Dr. Castaneda last time. Should I come back to you?
That's fine. I'll just mention that we all, several of us, four of us, went to the large district summit that the Texas Association of School Boards held in Austin last week. I think we got some valuable information there. That's all I wanted to report. Thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
No.
Dr. Castaneda?
Let me just say that we just recently hosted the UIL volleyball championships. I was there on Friday evening. It was an amazing event. Think about this, we hosted the number one, three, and 11-ranked teams, not in the state, in the nation, girls volleyball, one, three, and 11 in the nation, were there on Friday evening. I got to meet several of the UIL officials. They all raved about our facility. The best thing is, one of the issues that they raised last year was a practice facility for the teams to warm up, and we said, well, we have a high school literally connected by the parking lot, and so they were able to do all their practicing at Naaman Forest High School. And again, all the UIL officials were amazed at the facility, the ability to practice nearby, and of course, all, all the amenities in the area. So wonderful, and hopefully we'll have them back in the future. And we'll go then to item five B, review account. Just one other thing, I'd like to congratulate Saxon High School on their amazing year in football. I think it's the first time they've ever beaten Garland High School, first time undefeated, district championship, and getting to the second round of the playoffs. Okay, let's review our, our calendar. As we mentioned, we have the Garland Chamber Legislative Breakfast on December 3rd. Also that evening is our strategic plan we mentioned earlier at Rowlett High School. It's at 6:00. On December 5th is the Garland Chamber Prayer Breakfast. On December 6th is the Rowlett Chamber Stampede at night. We have a Region 10 School Board Training on December 7th. We have the Garland Economic Development Partnership combines their December and November meetings, and that'll be on December 12th. And then again, we have the Avid National Conference. That'll be at Grape, in Grapevine, and our Director of Avid, Janice Howard, is a speaker there. And again, on December 17th, we have our special board meeting where we'll see our report from Huckabee on the assessment for the full district. Anything else added on the calendar? Okay, is there, are there any future agenda items? Mr. Axe.
Fellow board members, in your packet, you'll find a draft of a resolution. This is almost identical to the proposed resolution for the Tasby Board that we never got to discussing and voting on before the Tasby Convention. This one is one that's being circulated, asking that boards adopt it, to propose basically to the legislature that they change the legislation which prohibits school districts from being able to leave the Texas Teacher Retirement System active health insurance plan. Once, once you're in it, you're in it for, forever, according to current law, and that is becoming a burden on many school districts in the state, because...
Sir, you want this on the next agenda?
So I would like to have it on the next agenda.
Okay, superintendent, yes, okay.
Can I just have clarity? Where is this coming from?
It's actually being circulated, again, through Dell Valley ISD.
Oh.
Okay, we'll have that on the next agenda. Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Griffin?
I'd like to see the discipline report for the semester by six weeks and in a more user-friendly format.
Do you have a suggestion on what user-friendly means? I mean, it always helps if I can give staff what your expectations are, that way we can meet them.
I will send you a draft.
Perfect.
Okay, is that it? Okay, we'll go to our consent, item six. We're going to pull item F4, the renewal bit on technology, and discuss that separately. There was a request to pull that. So we're on consent agenda, item six, A through J with the pulling of item F4. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion that we approve the consent agenda pulling at item four. I'd print it now.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. That item passes five zero. Mr. Booker, item F4, Technology Services, please.
Yes, sir. To Mr. Glick, to the board members present, to Dr. Morrison, the contract before you, Contract 389, was originally a five-year contract. It, it is, with your approval, tonight would be its fourth and final renewable option for that particular contract.
Any questions?
Move to approve the amended version of this bid.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. That item passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Let's go to item seven A. These are all non-consent. Consider approval of resolution authorizing contribution to the Garland Economic Development Partnership. Dr. Barajas.
Yes, sir, Mr. Glick. I've been working with Luna and Associates on the development of the, both the resolution and the agreement. The resolution and the agreements for both, I'm sorry, for all three of the chambers are essentially identical, with the only difference being the information that each of the respective organizations presented to us regarding the nature of their existence. Therefore, we could incorporate that into the resolution for the board to deem what they were doing to be serving the district's public purpose. Therefore, we would be then allowed to make the contribution per the amount that is in the resolution. At the request of the attorney as well, we have drafted an agreement, which is included, which will be sent to the respective organizations for them to sign once we have actually had board approval for the resolution.
Any questions? Is there a motion on item...
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
I was just looking for, I was looking for the addendum that says that for the services provided in the attachments, right?
For which, which chamber?
For, well, for example, this one is the Garland one, and it, and says on item 4A, the partnership will use district funds to help fund the programs identified in Exhibit A. But I don't see the, I don't see the exhibits that support...
They were in our...
That's in our, that's actually in our packet?
They were in our packet.
The exhibit itself?
All right. This addendum added some names.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, the chair will then entertain a motion on item 7A.
Are we doing the A-B's yet?
No, just going to do it.
I'm just saying. I'd like a motion that we approve 7A.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. That item passes five zero. We've agreed to pull item 7B. So let's go to item 7C, consider approval of the resolution authorizing contributions to the Saxon Economic Development Corporation. Dr. Barajas.
Same information here, just slight changes differentiated between the Saxon Economic Development Corporation and, of course, the Garland Partnership. But essentially, it's the same information. The resolution is authorizing the district to enter an agreement by which we will make a contribution, because the board has deemed the contribution to serve the district's public purpose.
Any questions? If none, the chair will entertain a motion on item 7C, Saxon Economic Development Corporation.
I move item 7C.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. Item 7C passes five zero. We'll go to item 7D, the school calendar. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. You should have in your agenda packet the proposed, the proposed school calendar, 2014-15. There have been no changes. However, we did alter the color to accommodate Dr. Castaneda's request to a purple, and we circled the two in-service half-day staff development dates to better designate those as a standout within the legend and on the printed calendar. Same calendar presented a couple of weeks back. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Chair will then will entertain a motion on the 2014-15 school calendar.
The motion that we approve the 2014-15 calendar is printed in our agenda.
We have a motion in the second. Please show your affirmation raising your hand. The calendar passes five zero. I was thinking you might have to have a snow day a couple of days ago, but it must, it must have come very close, about 4:00 in the morning, I'm betting.
My kids were hoping for it.
Yeah. On item eight, tax report, are there any questions for Ms. Holmes? There being none, we are pleased to go into closed executive session under 551.001, and this will be under 551074, deliberating appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of an elected officer or employee. It's now 8:35 PM. We're returning from closed executive session. I certify the only matters discussed with those permitted under 551001 and 551074. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve all agenda personnel items as printed in our agenda.
Second.
No, wait, 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 we need the name, the name of the person?
At this point, okay.
Yes, please.
Including Luis Matias Beal for Assistant Principal at Williams Elementary School.
Second.
We have motion second. Discussion? Please show your affirmation raising your hand. Item passes five zero. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Seven.
We are adjourned. Please, everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.